Okay, are we good? Okay, so we are beginning our Tuesday, April 2nd, Policy Committee meeting. And thank you all for being here on this snowy day. We are focused this month on the series 200, which are related to the school board. And so we have our homework coming out of this series. So Policies for the First Reading, we have three. But if you go down to Policies for Review, Policy 203.1, School Board Procedures, Rules of Order should be moved. Let me make sure I'm saying the right one, right Patty? Is that the right one? Yeah, okay. Yeah, so 203.1, School Board Procedures, Rules of Order should be moved for a first reading. And so we'll start with Policy 201, The Legal Status of the School Board. And again, this is a model, Minnesota School Board Association and Minnesota Association of Superintendent Association Policy. And the purpose is the care, management, and control of the schools is vested by statutory and constitutional authority in the school board. The school board shall carry out the mission of the school district with diligence, prudence, and dedication to the ideals of providing the finest public education. The purpose of this policy is to define the authority, duties, and powers of the school board in carrying out its mission. Has a general statement of policy and then the variety of different sections. And again, the legal references and the cross-references at the end. And I actually, as I was doing my homework on this, I went to the state statute for school boards. And there's a lot of language in here that really kind of comes directly from the state statute as well. So a couple just kind of points as we first look at this. Under Section 4, Organization and Membership, on the model policy, it has the membership of the school board consists of six elected directors or seven. If the school board has submitted the question to the electors, then a majority have approved a seven-member school board. The term of office is four years. And I, and that's again out of state statute. But I'm thinking we might want to just put the membership of the school board consists of seven elected directors. And we, I guess, I don't know if we need that next sentence or seven if the school board has submitted. Just for background, we used to have nine members on the school board when I first moved to town in 1994. Yeah, and can't remember. It was after 1999 they switched it over sometime. So that would be one change, I guess I would recommend. Any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I agree. I mean, Minnesota statute expressly talks about a seven-member board. And we have other, some of our older policies that we've not yet quite updated in language. We've set that as precedent, 9005. We talk about having a seven-member board. So I feel that it makes much more sense just to make that clear from the get-go. And people can refer to statute if they need to know more about the history there, if necessary.
So I think we could take out then, we consist of seven directors or seven members. And then we could take out the rest of that sentence, but then keep the term of office is four years.
I agree.
And that in 123B09 statute, it's the first section on there is about school board membership that highlights that. And then, this isn't a change or a question, but I know when I was reading through it under five, where it talks about powers and duties, number C, the school board shall superintend and manage the schools of the school district. So I thought that was like an error, but it's actually right out of the state statute. I hadn't heard that term before. Yeah. And that, just for background, is in subdivision eight, the duties of the school board. And again, that language is right out of there. So I just wanted to point that out. Any comments or questions on just the first section? The other, just small point, under F, where it says the school board at its discretion may perform the following. And number two, just raised a question, furnish school lunches for pupils and teachers on such terms as the school board determines. And guess the question was just, you know, now with the state law, do we, do we need to have that under? I personally think we should just keep it. But I just wanted to note that, I know.
Yeah, and when looking at the statute that that comes from, it comes from General Powers of Independent School Districts, the 123B.O2. That language still remains in statute. So whether or not the new universal school lunches somehow supersedes that, it's not yet changed currently. So it makes sense to keep it until that's more clear.
And then, any other comments? I would just say that we, so we have the 100, or the 100, 200 series. But then we have the policy, the older policies, 8,000 and 9,000 series. And we haven't completely looked at all of those old policies to see which ones we can delete because of this. But there were two that did, from looking at them, seem like we could delete because they were covered in this. And it was the 8,000, which is Goals and Functions of the School Board. I think it's covered very much in this 200, or 201. And then the also 9090, which is Quorum for Meetings, is also covered in this policy for sure. And we'll still need to do some homework on the other policies to see which ones we can delete. But these two were pretty straightforward. Patty, this wasn't the one where, no, that's the one later where we talked about changing the statute. So, so any other discussion on this one? So that will be for our first reading then. And we'll have a chance to continue to look if any of the 8,000 or 9,000 series we can delete. And my recommendation on that is, if you have time to look at it between now and our meeting on April 18th, we could still add it. Maybe get to, just get back to me on which sections of some of those other policies maybe fall underneath this one. Because this one really covers a lot. And there were some in the 8,000 and 9,000 that were very similar. But there was maybe a paragraph or two that we're like, eh, I'd want some other eyes to look at it with some of those. And I can point those out to you, Patty, too. Otherwise, because it's our first reading, we can also do it at our April policy meeting, too. Okay? Then the next one is Policy 203, Operation of the School Board Governing Rules. And the purpose of this policy is to provide governing rules for the conduct of meetings of the school board. And goes over just the rules of order, following state statutes, specific rules that are consistent with Minnesota statutes, and then Robert's Rules of Order. And I guess the only comment on this would be where it has the note that the additions of Robert's Rules of Order differ. So specifying the addition used is important. But it does say latest edition. So I think we can just take the note out.
Yeah, we normally take the note out.
Okay.
But if you want, I can look at the book we currently have. And I could put that addition in.
So the most recent addition for Robert's Rules of Order is, it's the 12th edition. So I mean, I guess the discussion can be had if we want to leave that language as latest edition. And then everyone going forward 20 years from now will know it's whatever most recent one they can get.
Okay. Any other comments on that one? Okay, then the next one will be yeah, 203.6, Consent Agenda. The purpose of this policy is to allow the use of consent agenda. And it kind of goes over all the different things that could be a part of the consent agenda. And I think just a little historic, history. When we changed to doing a consent agenda, it was in January of 2020, I believe. Or when, and we, I'm not sure why we didn't adopt this, but we did adopt a regulation that we're going to be talking about that lays out what's, lays out a lot of what's in this policy. So I guess one of the conversation we could have is, do we need the regulation if we now have a policy that really lays out the same information? And Patty thinks we probably don't because it falls underneath this policy, which we didn't have before. So if you need a minute just to kind of compare the regulation to the policy, if you haven't done that, we can talk more about the regulation when we get to that. But that would be it kind of goes hand in hand with the conversation.
Yeah, and just for clarity's sake, that regulation is, in our current policy manual, is 203.2R. And the title of it is Order of the Regular School Board Meeting Bylaw. But the text of that is only about the consent agenda. And so our, what we're discussing now for first reading then is 203.6, Consent Agendas.
Right.
And so recognizing that there's a lot of similar information. The only difference that I saw when looking at this between the two is that in our current 203.2R, we give a lot more examples of what we would consider being on a consent agenda with the statement that it may include but is not limited to than what the 203.6 provides. So whether or not we want to be that detailed is a question that we can discuss if people feel that they need to.
And the list is, that's in the Policy 203.6. There are, is overlap to what we have in the regulation. We just have it in more detail. Any thoughts?
But it's sometimes needed.
Yeah, and one idea would be if we went with 203.6, Policy As Is, but then the regulation that we have that we're going to be reviewing later, another idea could be just changing that to 206 or 203.6, Order of Consent Agenda or something like that. You know, and this becomes the regulation for this policy. But is it redundant? That's, I guess, the question in front of us.
I have a clarifying question. So in our current 203.2R, when the list of what consent items may, what consent agenda items may include but are not limited to, F is contracts over $100,000? I, for some reason, I thought that when it's over $100,000, it does come to the board. And if it's under, we give authority to our administrators to handle those. But I haven't had a chance to double-check that. So that might be something just to make a note that we confirm.
Did we just pass a policy on that?
I was gonna
Go ahead.
Or did you? I was just gonna say, what, by putting it on the consent agenda, you are approving those contracts over $100,000? Was that your question? Or did I misunderstand your question?
No, I just, my recollection was that when it's over $100,000, it always comes to us for, oh, so you're saying, I got it. But if it's under $100,000, it wouldn't even be on a consent agenda because we've already given.
So
That makes it work there. Thank you.
Thanks. And usually that would come through the HR Finance Committee first and then come to the board for
I would say that one of the things that isn't in the policy, but it's in this regulation, is who compiles the list of consent agenda items. I'm not seeing it. But it's in the regulation that the superintendent consulting with the school board chair and clerk compiles the list of consent agenda items for each school board meeting agenda. So there may be reason why we'd want to either add that in the policy or keep the regulation, but just change the number to coincide with this policy.
It may seem really minor, but thinking about how the items are ordered from, in alphabetical order, kind of starting from general of minutes to more specific items, it seems like maybe the standing committee reports should be moved up to the second item after, after minutes from past meetings and then standing committee reports and then the more detailed items and then ending with other. I mean, just as far as like flow of how, how things are normally listed. So if it's not the end of the world, by any means.
But it would be just changing the
But it would make sense to maybe have minutes from last meeting, standing committee reports, then the detailed items, and then other resolutions as the last one.
I'm wondering if we would want to because of that list, but also because of that one section here about the superintendent, like who decides? If that, that's a one good reason to keep it in a regulation. And again, keep the policy general, but then do have a regulation that goes with this policy. I think that might
I think so.
Because, you know, consent agendas are still kind of new. I mean, school boards are using them all over, but they're still kind of new for us. But any so I guess what I'm proposing is if we adopt or for first review, 203.6, Consent Agenda As Is, and then the informational item that we're going to talk about, that's now 203.2. If we change that to 203.6 Regulation and then we change the name of it so it matches the consent agenda rather than Order of the Regular School Board Meeting because that gets confusing. Order of the Consent Agenda at the regular school board meeting.
I think what normal practice is is when we do a regulation, we have it be the same name as the policy.
Okay.
And we just put the R after the number.
Okay.
So I would recommend 203.6R Consent Agendas.
Okay. I think simplifying it makes sense. Everyone agree? Okay. So are we good with that? Again, it's the first reading, so. Great. And then, the next one then is the one we moved up. And it is 203.1, School Board Procedures, Rules of Order. And this would be our first reading. It just should have been put up there just in case you didn't hear that. And this is 203.1, School Board Procedures, Rules of Order. The purpose of this policy is to provide specific rules of order to conduct meetings of the school board. Has a general statement, talks about the rules of order. And then the legal references and cross-references. There was, I don't think we need to be more specific, but again, up for discussion. I think it was J, the order in which names will be called for roll call votes will be determined by the school board. And I know that the practice has been to kind of alternate the clerk just calling out. I don't know if
I think that makes sense.
We need to be that specific. Do we?
No.
Okay.
I, I would say not, but it I think it's nice to have it in a random order.
And it does, at the end, say, "In addition, school boards may have other rules or local customs, say, which to incorporate to reflect their normal processes and procedures." So I guess it gives us room. Are we good with that one? And again, when we review the 8,000 and 9,000, there was one that had a few pieces of this one. So we, again, as we're looking, this, this one might have a few pieces of the many policies that fall under the 8,000 and 9,000 series. Okay, the next one then, under review, or excuse me, now, we had no policies for a second reading. Now, again, the Policies for Review are policies we've adopted. Many of them were adopted like in 2018 already or reviewed. So unless there's any major changes, we just need to review them in one meeting. We don't need two for that. So the first one is Policy 202. And that's School Board Officers Bylaw. And the purpose, School Board Officers are charged with the duty of carrying out the responsibilities entrusted to them for care, management, and control of the public schools of the school district. The purpose of this policy is to delineate, I can't say that word, these responsibilities. And so it goes through the different responsibilities of the chair, the treasurer, the clerk, the vice chair, and the superintendent. And then it has a legal and the cross-references. And again, we reviewed it in 2018, April of 2018, and adopted it in May. And then there were a number of policies that were replaced in the 8,000 and 9,000 series. And if you go back to the legal references, where it says the state statutes, the names have been changed of some of the state statutes, not the number. So that's a minor change that Patty can make in the review. But any comments or questions on this one?
So I was wondering with this one, it looks like we have a Policy 9,000 that's entitled Annual Meeting. And so I was wondering if that might be something that can be deleted because many, much of that is incorporated in this one. I'll give everyone a chance to look at that. But the other question I had, I don't know if it's a new school board member or just not completely trained up on all my legal mumbo, legal mumbo jumbo, but the differences between policy, bylaw, like regulations, I think I have a grasp on. But when we have bylaws and policies, if there's either experts in the room or if it's something that we can have a discussion about or education about in the future, that'd be great.
I heard the difference between a policy and a bylaw. Was there another one that you said, too? Did you say Okay. I can differentiate a little bit more about policy and regulations. Policy is usually broader and it's a general thing of what you want to follow. And then you generally make a regulation if something in the policy states like, when they were coming with like the curriculum policies, for example, it said a procedure would be created to do this, then you would come up with a regulation that would tie to that policy to show what the actual procedure is that would back up that policy. Bylaws, I'm not exactly sure. And I just recently had noticed that some of ours have, say, bylaw on them. So someone else might have a better understanding of that. Or we can look into that and have an answer for the next time we meet, too. But that's my understanding between, between a policy and a regulation. And a regulation is also just information for the school board. They don't approve regulations. We just share the regulations that, and procedures that we create to back up a policy for you to have as informational purposes so they don't go to like the regular school board meeting for approval or anything.
The comment about the 9,000 series, I think the only thing that, and I remember when I looked at this earlier, that, well, it does cover it under the organization. It's really specific in the 9,000 series about the process for electing. And that is covered in our organizational meeting by the School Board Association when we but the But the 9,000 series covers it as well in a little bit more detail than what is in Policy 202, so. So I'm going to maybe suggest, let's hold off deleting it and just kind of look at it a little bit more and kind of compare it to some other policies from other districts, too, to see if they added it more specifically. That just might be good.
That makes sense.
Yeah, but... That's exactly what we all should be doing as we're looking at these 8,000 and 9,000 series, is picking them apart just like that. Yeah, so thank you, Sarah. Anything else in the School Board Officers' Bylaws? Now, this is for review. So it'll go on the consent agenda at our April meeting. And you'll make those changes in red light on the legal references, or highlight. Okay. Okay. And the next one is Policy 203.2, Order of Regular School Board Meeting, again, bylaw. The purpose of this, now this says the purpose of this bylaw, not policy. So that would be good to clarify. Is to ensure consistency in the order of business at regular school board meetings. And this is the one where we had the most, again, we just brought the order to what we're doing today. So nothing in the content of it, just in the practice of how the order of our school board meetings run, and then also taking out the audience because of our new public participation policy, so that we took out. And then, the committees that we're actually using right now, not our old committees. So just updated that, and then the numbering. So again, doesn't change the content of it, just brings it up to what we're doing. And then at the bottom there, just being we had this discussion, D does say, "Any questions of order arising not provided in these bylaws shall be decided according to parliamentary rules for the government of deliberate bodies as defined by Robert's Rules of Order, newly revised." Does that- Yeah.
Should that language change to latest edition, so it's consistent with what we-
That's what I was wondering, too. Yeah.
Also, looking at the order, I noticed we don't approve our minutes, or that's not included, and it is included in the School Board Model Policy, Associates Model Policy. And I wasn't sure if there was reason behind that.
Well, we approve it in the consent agenda.
In the consent, okay.
Yeah.
Great.
Yeah.
And then I just looked up the MSBA policy while we were sitting here. And they, for this policy in particular, they don't have bylaw at the end. So I don't know if they did in the past, and they've removed it in the revised version that they made in 2007, or if prior prior ones added it, or-
And it could have been, I kind of am recalling a conversation around bylaws, and that some, some board members felt that that should have been there. Is kind of what I'm remembering. Would you look up 202 and see what they have too?
Yeah. 202 does not have the word "bylaw" after it as well, as far as the MSBA model policy.
So if people are in agreement that we take that off, and we, so it's not confusing, and we can maybe get a second opinion if we, if this is the wordage from Terry, or from NSBA, yeah.
So then, would that change the language then, under purpose, the purpose of this bylaw?
Yeah, the purpose of this-
Policy. You want me to change it to policy?
And then also, number two, general statement of policy.
Oh, yes. Or, or on other ones, oh, yeah, that does say of policy, yep. Okay. Yep, I can make those changes. Okay. And then, in 203.2, I was also, there is some, the statutes, again, didn't change, but the numbers didn't change, but some of the names of the statutes changed. So I'll get those updated as well.
Thank you, Patty. And they'll be redlined when we get it for the April meeting, so. Anything else? Under 203.2? Okay, and then 203.5, School Board Meeting Agenda, Bylaw. See if we can take that out there. There's three places, just like the other one.
Okay.
The purpose of this bylaw is to provide procedures for the preparation of the school board meeting agenda to ensure that school board can accomplish its business as efficiently and exponentially as possible. And I know in the 8,000 or 9,000 series, there was one that, again, had some pieces of that. So when we were reviewing, but it wasn't, I couldn't easily say we should just delete it. But this was reviewed in, or updated in 2018. And then, at that time, there was, one, two, three, five different policies in the 8,000 and 9,000 series that were deleted when this was updated. And I guess this could just be a quick discussion. Superintendent Magnus, just, you know, in terms of agenda setting, how you feel it's been going under this policy, and just-
Yeah, I think agenda setting is, usually, it's done really collaboratively. We usually meet prior to the meeting with at least a week's notice so that we have time to prepare if there's any additions or subtractions from the agenda. There's, again, it's, I would say, the collaboration that we've had as a team when we set the agenda, there hasn't been significant disagreement, and so I think that it's functioned quite well. I think quite often, we have somewhat similar opinions and train of thought as board members. So it would be interesting to see how this went if there were very diverse perspectives when we met in those meetings. But I think right now, given the makeup of the board and given our function, I think that it's working very effectively.
And I think with our new strategic plan, and just kind of the emphasis of how we're reporting back to the community and to us as board members, that really plays into setting the agenda as well. And I don't know if there's anything you'd want to add about that, Assistant Superintendent Bonds?
You captured it all.
Yeah.
I think that's been very productive, and it has allowed us to, again, share with the community the things that we're working on and that are part of our strategic plan. So I think it's been a really good process. It ends up being a very detailed, and sometimes lengthy conversations around a lot of important topics, but it's been working really well, though.
I'd say, too, the work we've done with Committee of the Whole, with the progress monitoring documentation that we have, that's aligned to each of our three strategic plan areas of supporting every student, advancing equity, and improving systems, gives us that more consistent focus. I think it'll be important, you know, this is our first year that we're using that type of plan. I think it'll be important for us to reflect as we come to close with the year to think about what would we like to do differently, what went well, and just kind of take it as a systems improvement, in our systems improvement agendas.
And kind of the reality, too, is there are things that come up every March, every year, you know, things that we need to discuss at certain times every, you know, the budget, for example, falls. And so some of the agenda is kind of put in place by things we're required by law to do at, in certain times. And so there's kind of no secret agenda there.
I agree, and it's hopeful having just the different perspectives that we have on the board. We have, we have fresh perspectives with new board members who have great experience as well. And then we have new board, or continuing board members who have been with us for quite some time that have seen kind of that cadence as we go along. So I think all board members are contributing very, very well to the process. And I think thus far, I'm, at least from my perspective, it seems like board members are comfortable with the way that we're communicating things up to the people who are at the agenda-setting sessions. But if there's ever an issue or a conflict, or people feel like they're not being represented, we'd want to know that so that we can improve our process, too. So we're always open to hearing feedback and changing.
Well, and I think that's what this bylaw policy, however we're describing it-
Policy.
His policy does, because it provides those avenues for, if members or anyone, you know, feels that something needs to be considered for the agenda, those avenues in which to approach and request that. So, because I think of, I appreciate what you said about how, you know, many of us are trying to move in the same direction, you know, with our varying perspectives. But I think of, like, okay, what happens when I'm no longer on the board, or none of us are, you know, here in Duluth anymore, generations from now, if this policy is still in effect, with a different board and a different makeup, will it still be as effective and useful to future school boards and our constituents? And so I was wanting to make sure that we're doing good on that as well.
Yeah, and this, you know, actually, since I've been on the board in 2013, the practice that's written in B, C, and D has always been there, since I've been on the board. So... And I appreciate that it included that we would get information at least three days prior to the scheduled school board meeting. Thank you, Patty, for making that happen, so we have time to do our homework before the meeting itself, so. Any other questions or comments on that?
I just have a quick comment in reviewing the one on MSBA. Again, a statute name changed. And then, there is a Department of Admin Advisory Op number that, for whatever reason, wasn't on this one, but it's on the MSBA, so I'll make sure that gets added in as well.
And then, again, as we've been talking, just as you're looking at the 8,000 and 9,000 series, if anything strikes you that we, in any of those that relates to this policy, bring it to my attention. So 203.5. Okay, so that is the last one for review. And then we already covered the informational regulations. So under the 200 series, there were, we will be bringing more of them forward for either first reading or reviews, but these were just the ones that we felt like we could move forward without any major changes or that. So there will be more. So again, if you have nothing better to do, just spend your time on the 200 series, because you're gonna, we're gonna be bringing more to you. Other than that, anything else? Okay, great.
Thank you.
Great work. Thank you, thank you, Patty.